All right, here we go. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, welcome to another special session. Brought to you by yours truly Smoking Permeated Podcast. You already know what it is. I'm your player partner, goddamn Red Ricardo Jackson. Thank you. Hold your applause at the end. I got my player partner here with me, Bob Doc Quaid. Bob Doc Quaid, say hi to the people.
Hi to the people.
Okay, then, you know, we got a special guest in this motherfucker. Y'all seen him once. Y'all seen him again, goddamn. The real player, say what's up to the people, play. Already, we in this motherfucker for, for special sessions number. Five, number five. I don't know, I be losing count. You know, I ain't good with numbers unless it's money, goddamn. Number five. How y'all been doing, man? What's, what's going on? Y'all had a good week this week, man?
Can't complain, man.
That's what's up.
How about yourself? Doing all right?
Oh, yeah, I ain't got no complaints at all.
We got Platt back. For those who wanna go visit our YouTube page, we've been doing special sessions for a little while now, and he was the first one to show up. He wasn't the only one to show up. But he was the first one to show up. With Gang Gang and them. All of them couldn't fit on camera. It was, it was, uh, we were caught a little off guard and weren't prepared, so we, uh, were happy to be able to have him come back, so we could sit down and try to do a little better job of getting a little information out there for y'all people about y'all people, you know what I'm saying?
The Ju gang, wasn't it? Ju gang. Uh, no gang, I remember that. Fuck the rest of them, all along, goddamn.
So, um, how's the game been since we last saw you?
Everything, everything been pretty smooth. I mean, you know, like a couple of them dropped off. You feel me? But you know, I got them, that's to be expected when you, when you running a little team, you feel me? Everybody don't make the cut, man, you feel me?
So what y'all working on? What y'all got out here? Let the people know.
Right now, no, I'm saying, you know, Ju gang, bruh, like, I'm, I'm in the process of building, building a production team, like far as the, like, I just got a cameraman on there, you know what I'm saying, Leon Prince, man. If y'all ain't got with that man, give that man with the videos, he shooting them deals right now.
Shout out Leon.
You feel me, uh, shoot, uh, last night I got my brother Chatter, you know what I'm saying, everybody call him Smooth. You feel me? He, 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 he producer on the squad, you feel me? Still got Ovi. Migo Cardi, still one of the, uh, engine, I mean engineers and producers on the squad, you feel me? And I'm, and I'm, you know, I'm the main little engineer in the.
Running the ship.
I guess that is how you start the engineering shit up. And you just turn into a whole label.
Yeah, I really got all the equipment because the person I was recording with was bullshitting with me for about like two, three weeks. So I was like, man, you know what, fuck it, let me go ahead and, uh, just buy all the equipment. And then, but I really buying the equipment just to be on some self shit, like far as I got a place to record now. Man, got done at least like a month later, that shit turned into a business. Been going strong, about got them three and a half year now.
I ain't a man. It's the best way to do it, shit. If you gonna buy some shit and invest, you just making a business, goddamn. Get some money back out of it.
And if it's something you enjoy doing, you know, all the better, of course.
Then on top of that, you know, I'm an artist too at the same time.
You, uh, you be trying to big boy folks to get on their songs?
No, no, I gotta, I gotta coach people like that.
You gonna put me on this motherfucking song, man?
I'm the boss.
Now, open up that verse right there.
Every time I got them dropping, make some fire, one of my partners be like, baby hop on that, man.
That's how they do. You put that in a song, you shouldn't put me on there.
Man, do you ever let them, do you be like, all right, let me go ahead and write something to it and not let you know if it's good enough?
You gotta make the cut on them songs. Gotta make the cut, can't have nothing garbage, man. I'm, I'm big on critiquing yourself, man, and critiquing your swag.
How do you draw that line, being the business person and, and the head of the, the, um, everything that's going on with? You know? Uh, so art is everyone's own perception for what's good and bad, right? So, there could be somebody that I may consider is not the greatest artist, like a Lil Yachty. You know what I'm saying? But obviously, a lot of motherfuckers disagree with me. So, and had I been in his corner, I would have been telling him like, mm, maybe try something else for life. Not even do this, you know what I'm saying? So, how do you, do you find yourself trying to go between that, or do you just go with a gut instinct? How do you make those decisions to not hinder someone's creativity, but also tell them they need to step their game up?
Like, what I do is, man, it's like, I'm, like, the way I grasp, like, artists on my squad and stuff like that, is damn near you have to be a powerhouse by yourself, you know what I'm saying? That don't necessarily mean you gotta be the hottest thing out, that don't necessarily mean, you know what I'm saying? You, you know, say everybody gotta be, got them like, yo, who do we want? But you know what I'm saying? But long as I see that, got them like, damn, that bruh, bruh got them, got, got, got a hell of a grinder. She, she got a hell of a hustle about, about herself, you know what I'm saying? Man, it's like, and on that type of shit, only thing a person need is that guidance and the extra push. Cause back in the day, when I was trying to do shit, I ain't had that extra push, that extra guidance to be like, man, bro, you dope as hell. You just gotta get everything in order, you know what I'm saying?
Right, you, you, you know what you wanna do, you just need some help trying to do it, goddamn. Just a little guidance.
Exactly, man, that's all it take. And people give you a chance, man, it's like, you know what I'm saying, and then, but nowadays, you got so many people scared to give somebody a chance because of numerous reasons, like maybe loyalty, uh, or, you know what I'm saying, or bullshit procrastinate, you know what I'm saying? Or sometimes it might turn out like, man, that motherfucker doing exactly what they supposed to do. You feel me? It just, it just like, all this shit come with a gamble.
Yeah, you're not gonna know till you give them that chance. Double ass sword. But so, okay, so if you, y'all, three, four of y'all in the studio, everybody writing, recording, making shit, and somebody finish up their track, and they like, hey, put it to the side, hey, listen to this, this what I'm trying to do, yada, yada, and you be like, mm.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, all the way through, you know what I'm saying, if it ain't, if it ain't what it is, I'm gonna be honest, I'm like, yeah, you can come a little harder. Like, everything straight up to this point. And then it's like, cause like me, I, I be, I be doing my music, I be wanting this shit to do like this the whole time. You feel me, versus, oh, down, then come back up, it's like, that, that throw the song off track. Cause by the time it go down, you lost, you lost a lot of people's attention.
Okay, so here's another question, cause I see that there's, um, I, it seems to me at least that the scene in Huntsville is starting to get back to how it was, uh, a while ago, like, uh, I don't know, maybe early, late, maybe early two thousand O's kinda timeframe? That's like fifteen years ago-ish, something like that. It's starting to get back to that, but with that going on, the places that people go to perform, it seems like there's usually only one type of music that gets performed in these places. So, do you gear, uh, what you're looking for in a team to something like that, because that's the area you're, you're working in? Or are you like, fuck it, if you do that, go there, if you do something else, we'll figure out something else?
Yeah, I mean, you know, going, 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 going to them little places, like, I don't really be, like, really ain't been on the mode of scouting, you know what I'm saying? So if I go there, it's damn near the people that I've been on the road with for a, a year and a half, two years, you know what I'm saying? Trying, trying to make it through, but like, if, if I see somebody ain't got a team, and they rightfully trying to fuck with me, you feel me, I'm gonna give them opportunity, you know what I'm saying? But the thing is, is like, it's them trial runs. I may not call it a trial run, but it's a trial run, man, see if you really can withstand this, you know what I'm saying? And see if you can grow within the next couple of months, you know what I'm saying, far as stage presence, far as the way a person record. Cause people think they're recording shit serious, that you, I, I know a couple people who can freestyle their ass off, off a mic. But soon as they get on the mic, goddamn, like, it just ain't, it, it, it just don't be what it's supposed to be. Yeah, you feel me? So it's like, yeah, you gotta, yeah, but, but you know, that's why I'm, I'm really about to get into this artist development thing too. Where, where it's like, like helping artists, you know what I'm saying, find their style, helping them critique their style when they do find it, you know what I'm saying? And then trying to give them a little gateway where, where, you know what I'm saying, some of, some of my connections and shit I be having going on out of town and in town, trying to put them on that too, so, yeah, just, just, man, you know, it's, it's like, it's a lot, it's a lot major shit about to happen, man, this year, man.
So, where you from? You from here? You from Huntsville?
I was born in Huntsville, but shit, I was raised in Kansas City.
Kansas City?
Well, nah, Topeka, Kansas, my bad, the capital, yeah.
Okay, then, um, what's it like performing in other places besides? How's it different performing in Huntsville than other places for?
Uh, to be honest with you, I didn't, I didn't got a lot, lot more love shown on that road in these other clubs with people that I'd have known, because it's like, you know, you know how that shit goes, like in your city, they ain't gonna support you like that. But goddamn, but let somebody out of town come through the city, and they hat everybody on the wave, you know what I'm saying? It's based on some damn near shit like that out, out of state. It's all about goddamn the way you perceive yourself when you out of state, and the way you rock out when you on that stage, you feel me?
That's what I always heard of from the artists, they say it's, you get a lot more love on the road than you do at home.
You meet some genuine people on that road, for real, too. And then, if you go, if you go to, like, a bunch of them shows, like I did, it was a whole bunch of people from Memphis that, 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 you know what I'm saying, that I'm rightfully tight with now, you feel me?
Just cause of being on the same car with them.
And then they end up eventually lowering your song ready to hop on stage with you, when you got to do your thing, you feel me?
For real, full circle type shit, yeah.
But it's all a learning experience, man, like everything with this, with this music shit is a learning experience. I don't know everything, I know I'm still learning shit, you feel me?
What made you wanna just make it a whole label instead of just being an artist by yourself?
Oh, really? My intentions wasn't even to get a, have artists on my squad. It was really just me, you know what I'm saying? It was like something I was just trying to get off the ground. Really wasn't taking it that serio-, I was taking my music serious, before it's like the label and the brand, like, I wasn't really too much taking that serious. I was more focused on the real Platt versus, you know what I'm saying? A company, the Ju gang company, you feel me? And then when I got the hub, you know what I'm saying, when I got the hub, and, uh, Poo Shox and Fujiano came through the, man, that took it up. We wasn't even all the way open, everybody wasn't even all the way set up, and then, soon as them, they came, man, it was like, phew.
What's the hub?
The hu-, the hub was a, a recording studio, me and my, uh, one of my partners, we, we had started. Uh, it was, it was right down, uh, Blue Springs, actually, right, I mean, not Blue Springs, but Meridian, right across the street from Lee High School. It was a, yeah, it was a big building, we had, uh, Boss Man in there, we had Ben Frank, you know what I'm saying, we had, uh, Sean Rampage, me, Ty. It was like, in, in, in a ten building room, we had six active studios. So, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, so from there, but that's when I started being like, okay, I need to learn how to record, cause I ain't know how to record. I was just shit, I, I just started learning from there, yeah. I'm like, hell, I got the equipment, somebody can record me here, you know what I'm saying? But after a while, I started seeing when nobody really trying to help me up, and like, like, like they supposed to, you know what I'm saying? And what I did, I just started going back to.
Cause if you think about it, I mean, that's how niggas gonna take it. Hey, I got some clips, you gonna come cut my hair? Probably not? I feel you, but probably not. Like, so you gonna end up having to learn how to cut to get, getting that meal yourself, goddamn, so, that makes sense.
But me learning shit out, man, I was five, four months. I just, going back, looking at, looking at my templates and see what they did to my vocals, muteness, see what took off, putting it back on, see what, yeah, yeah, I learned this shit by myself. Like, I had a few people guiding me through it, but after, after that shit happened, I had to learn on my own, for real. I've been doing it about like three years now, man, like far engineer by myself and stuff. Now I got a new location, you feel me, I ain't in the building with, with a bunch of others, you know what I'm saying, just really my, my location where people could come in and get a vibe, you know what I'm saying, Ju gang studios, man, for real. And then it's, it's like I say, it's a vibe, you know what I'm saying, real quality sound music, man, that shit coming up, man, for real.
They can find that shit like that online, right?
You can Google Ju gang studios, and it's gonna pop up, unless you know, it's gonna even give you a little, a little viewer of what the studio look like inside, which I done updated a lot of stuff, but you know what I'm saying, so I gotta update some pictures and shit. Yeah, you feel me? And then, like I say, the team I got, man, you want, trying to have it a one stop shop. Hey, you come in this motherfucker, goddamn, get you a beat, go right behind you, goddamn, record it, and go right, go, go, go right in the front and goddamn, uh, shoot a video today. And then, you know what I'm saying, my fiance got, my fiance, she got her little shop in the building too, so you know what I'm saying, she press up clothes, and you feel me? Do her thug thizzle.
Whatever you want. Ju mark, goddamn.
So did you, when you started getting into the engineering, are you at a point now where you be like all extra about having a particular vocal chain, or using certain plugins, or?
Yeah, I mean, I use my, I use my certain plugins, and, but, but really, right now, what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to get the people to understand that I don't just record rap music. And I'm saying, and that's where, that's where I mostly get, you know what I'm saying, I, I wanna, I wanna sit here and record some country music, I wanna sit here and record some rock and roll. I wanna record some gospel, you know what I'm saying?
So you trying to, you, uh, get into, you gonna set up like a band and stuff like that?
I don't know about that just yet, but I know, but I got like the, the.
Or I mean, like, you got space, like?
And I got equipment for, like, live bands and shit too, though. It's really up, man.
Nah, I'm gonna come play the saxophone.
Hey, I always wanted to learn how to play the guitar, though. Never learned how to play that shit.
I think my fingers were too big, I was hitting like two strings at once, goddamn, shit wasn't working.
But now I'm just really mostly focused on self-like career wise, you know what I'm saying? It's like, shit, I'm still focusing on a team or whatever, but really, right now, it's like, hey, I gotta take time out to understand and have everybody understand that shit, I am an artist too.
Yeah, gotta get yourself straight before you get somebody else straight.
So that's what I'm on, so be on the lookout for, you know what I'm saying, Still In Motion. And then by like, what, probably the middle of the summer, I'm gonna drop my, uh, It's The Real Ones Coming From Platt, you feel me?
Okay, then, so look, we, we got a little.
That's The Real Ones Coming From Platt gonna be a mixtape, and, uh, That's Still In Motion gonna be an EP.
And that's coming on all platforms, kinda thing?
Gotta wait for that shit, look for that shit.
Dope shit, man.
We got a little question, we'd like to ask around here. So, say, you found a genie. Well, you found the lamp, you rubbed that bitch, a genie came out, so yeah, you found a genie. You get one motherfucking thing. It can't, it ain't like a wish, like, you can't wish for some more wishes, you can't wish for a motherfucker to love you. There's gotta be something you could touch, something that's tangible, something you could hold, something somebody could see for real. You get one of them motherfuckers. So it can't be some money, cause you only get one. You build some money, you get a hundred dollars, that's the most money you can get. But one person is gonna die when you get this, a random person. You might know him, you might not know him, it's a random person that you met before. It could be anybody, somebody you passed the Walmart and spoke to, anybody. If you don't push, oh, it's a button, I ain't said it was a button or is it?
You said it's a wish.
It's a wish, okay, yeah, but yeah, I, I guess that's it, yeah. If you don't make the wish, somebody that's closest to you gonna die, so you gotta make the wish.
I mean, the only wish I say, I, I wish, I wish to be in position, you know what I'm saying? I wish for to me, for me to be in position. But to the point, everything, everything will be, to the point, I better take care of my family and shit, and everybody around me will be able to be taking.
Can't use that.
Can't use that.
Like a thing.
Like, look at that thing right there.
Yeah, I mean.
I have one of these, I got one of these, I own this.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if I could, if I could make one wish, man, for real, for real. I mean, I, I, I really wanna make, make my stu-, make my, my company be one of the biggest companies in the world.
I guess that could be done.
That could be done.
That could be. Okay, then. So you, you kill the baby, so you can have the biggest company in the world. The baby, get the baby the fuck out of here, Platt Industries is running this shit.
Ju gang or no gang, nigga? Going for the babies too.
Most people, it take a lot longer to answer that question. You know what you want, goddamn. Even if it doesn't mean the baby.
Start that generation of wealth shit, you know what I'm saying?
That would be very nice, that would be very nice. So, um, with the amount of people that you work around and have to be around so much, do you find yourself carrying their personality around with you or their problems? Does that happen as a boss?
At so, at some point it was with me, you know what I'm saying, but that was just, that was just me being like, damn near trying to be CEO plus damn near big brother, you know what I'm saying? But it's like, but sometimes the playing that role could really fuck you up on either end, for real, cause it's like, damn, I'm playing this role, and then they fuck around, cross you, you feel me? And it ain't really a role you playing, it's just who you is, you know what I'm saying? But it's just like, it's like, yeah, yeah, I, 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 I find, I find myself pulling, pulling others' problems on me. And if I'm able to help any type of way, I be trying to help, you know what I'm saying? Which, you know what I'm saying, that's just me having a good heart. Which that could be a bad thing at times.
Some of this stuff that people don't think about when they, uh, get into the, and I'm sure you probably didn't, because, you know what I'm saying, you just told us how you ended up getting into this. It went from waiting on somebody that was bullshitting from two weeks, to three months later, you then started recording yourself, or a month later, you said it's a month later.
After I got all my equipment, a month later, I fuck around, found the building, and it took off.
A month later, you just, so you weren't thinking when you got that building, like, you know, well, it's gonna be a bunch of people that, I gotta deal with all they bullshit? Just cause I'm trying to do something with myself.
And that was really one of the fucked up part, different, dealing with multiple personalities. And then having a buil-, a business like that, and having a bunch of big names of engineers and people who come through there, you know what I'm saying? And, and don't, don't nobody wanna be an Indian, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, you feel me, and, and that's where it was like, a whole bunch of heads.
Everybody bumping heads. Yeah, it'd be a lot of egos with rappers.
I get that saying too, and I, in my mind, I think that it will be, it doesn't necessarily have to be a bunch of Indians, it could be a lot of chiefs. But it, chiefs would have to actually know their position. You know what I'm saying, like, how, like how they, how superheroes got balanced out powers type shit? Or like in some av-, like in Avatar, they got the water people, then they got the land people and the air people, you know what I'm saying?
You gotta know your role.
Yeah, you gotta know. Still be a king without having to look at it like you being a follower, or being less than, cause that's the connotation that people get when you say be an Indian instead of a chief. But, I feel what you're saying. Some people do need to be Indians.
Yeah, so many people need to be Indians, goddamn, but, at the same time, everybody, everybody their own chief though, you know what I'm saying, everybody their own chief. But shit, when it's, when, when, when you know it's a, when you know the chief of, of, of something that's going on, it's like, for instance, I can't come to, you know what I'm saying, well, you know what I'm saying, the podcast, and try to take over till y'all had to run it, because, you know what I'm saying? Or even if I was a part of it, I can't be trying to play your position that you'd been playing for a couple of years already. Or your position that you been playing, you feel me, gonna look like me, like, what the fuck?
Sometimes you gotta be a follower.
It's hard to realize how other people can benefit you without, um, letting your ego be part of how you decide what you gonna do about that. A lot of people would rather just not get the benefit and run with their ego, instead of realizing how good things could be. And it's a difficult thing, humans are humans. People learn, they mature at different ages, times, and situations.
Sometimes you gotta goddamn lose it to realize goddamn where you fucked up at, you know what I'm saying? For real, for real, for real.
So what's your favorite part about, do you write, or you go and punch in?
I normally just punch in for real, like, I, I go up in there and just find a beat. If the beat weighing on me, I'm like, okay, yeah, let me go ahead and rock this motherfucker out. You feel me, but then, there's certain beats where it's like, yeah, you can't just really go up in there and just be on some freestyle shit, you gotta, yeah, I got some beats that I really have to write to, like, you know what I'm saying? Cause, cause me, I'm, I'm trying to get to the point where I'm trying to, it's like back to making, like, music, I make music, you know what I'm saying? But right now, I got them, I just feel like I just been going in, versus, you know what I'm saying? Like, trying to get some shit like that, I could rightfully just play on the radio, you know what I'm saying? Like, versus, other than just goddamn going like, yo, with the shit. Making, making music, you know what I'm saying, yeah, making, yeah, making, making music other than making songs.
Cause you kinda focus on making things that you can go and perform at these places.
You know what I'm saying, it took me off of, like, really just like, okay, yeah, it's other lanes of music other than club music.
Cause that's the thing, like, when you, if you doing anything that's not club music, where you go to perform that? Where are you gonna go to?
Those, those be the type of songs that, like, you gotta listen to a CD.
This is shit you find on X, you did.
So it just be shit like that, man.
You have a preference to either finding something that you get to sit down and write with, or being in the booth? Just depending on your mood that day?
Just depending on my mood, for real, and then, the, the music shit, got them go ahead and burn one to the face, man, turn something on, shit, that shit just, just magic. It start freestyling like, hell no, let me put this shit down for real. Let me put this shit down for goddamn, cause hey, this, this shit gonna go. It's just about, it's just about right, right, like, in the moments, in the moments, you gotta catch it. You feel me, versus got them trying to go, go, go to the studio and get in the moment, you know what I'm saying? It's all about goddamn right in that moment, hell, man, goddamn do that shit.
Don't be the same.
Gotta catch it at the studio.
Yeah, yeah, for real. But yeah, it's shit fun, though, I don't lie. I'm sorry, I wouldn't change nothing that go, ever go on, cause they, like I say, the goods and the bads, man, it's all be learning experiences, man, for real. I wouldn't change none of that.
Oh, yeah, you gotta take the good with the bad.
For real, cause I ain't gonna cap doing, doing this music, man, I done, I done seen a lot of cities and states that I ain't never seen that I don't want to see, you know what I'm saying? So it's like, it benefits through all of it. It benefits through all of it. It's just about staying consistent and standing in their face, man, for real. That's the best way goddamn to make this shit happen, that's my advice to all artists, man, stay consistent and stand these folks' face, bruh.
Sooner or later, they gonna see you, goddamn.
Good advice. That's good advice. Who's the favorite person out your camp?
Who's the favorite person out my camp?
This is trying to be some mad motherfuckers.
I'm my favorite out the camp.
Man, okay. That works, same way. You, you trying to pull some slick shit.
Yeah, yeah, you know, everybody got their moments, you know?
Who's your favorite artist out right now?
Who my favorite artist out right now, like, far just industry wise, or just in the city?
What do you, you wanna turn something on, what are you going to eight times out of ten?
Man, eight times out of ten, man, if I got, if I listen to anybody other than some local, lo-, lo-, local music, man, I'll watch it, it'd be there for next two times, you know what I'm saying? Or, or if it don't, or if it ain't for next two times, who would be, be Big Yabo. That's who I, that's who I be with, too.
That's who, uh, Kuma doing the tape with, right?
Hey, that boy Kuma, man, hey, for real, that boy something serious, man.
I've been seeing him do a lot of shit.
He, uh, he, he was doing a lot of my, uh, artwork, like, all of my, uh, mixtape covers. All of my, you know what I'm saying, single, single covers and shit like that, yeah, he even, believe this, not Kuma the one made my Ju gang logo. For real, man, shout out to that man, man.
Multi-talented, I mean.
You got songs with him?
Nah, I ain't got to, I ain't got nothing with him, I mean, I would love to work with, bruh, you feel me? At least if it ain't number one song, it'd be, uh, there, cause like dude work ethic is crazy, bruh.
Yeah.
Like, for real, for real.
Say you can make a song with anybody, anybody in the industry, anybody, whoever, dead or alive, whatever, who would it be?
Uh, in the industry, man, who I would rightfully wanna do something with? That's really, bro, who it would be, for real, for real, like, oh god, that's really who it would be. Cause I really trying to catch him when he came to Huntsville. For real, but I had a show in Memphis that day.
Did he get out of trouble, goddamn? I ain't never heard nothing about the little, little trouble he got in.
That's wild, you heard?
You talking about, you talking about, uh, uh, Tennessee, in Knoxville?
Is that where it was at? I don't know where it was at. The same thing that happened, got him fucked up the first time.
Uh, you talking about what he went live about?
I don't know.
Shit, I don't know, maybe some of that shit going on. For real.
That's wild, though, he was in Memphis and finesse two times.
It was here, yeah, yeah. Motherfucker probably pass each other on the road.
Yeah, for real, though. But yeah, that's just one of my favorite artists, though. It was Kevin Gates for a little minute, though, for real, for real. You know, everybody elevating, get on their own little wave, I liked the old Gates.
I fuck with the old Kevin Gates, uh. He be hating on Gates.
But I ain't gonna lie, right now, man, the city turned, though, it's, 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 it's a lot of artists in there. And the thing where I see now, that I haven't seen in a long time, is it's a lot of unity going on in, in, in the city. Even if it's separated.
I would say that, it's, it's some cliques.
It ain't like all together, but it's like, it's just unity, what to the point, it's like, okay, yeah.
It is some new shit, for real. Yeah, shit ain't been like that, motherfuckers be hating for real.
I mean, well, you, you know, you know, they, we still got haters out here.
As soon as one of them, one of them little cliques get upset, one person get upset with somebody, then it's a whole little ripple effect. Calm down and shit, but. Who, uh, are there people outside of Ju gang that you been doing music with?
Uh, yeah, I, 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 I deal with a lot of different, uh, artists, just outside of, of the squad, like, uh, I done done, I done done a few things with, um, with Terrio, you know what I'm saying, done with, done with Terrio, I know a lot of people don't know him, but, but like, you know what I'm saying, free that guy, man, he, 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 he wanted to roll, so, you know, FT and Draco, you feel me? I do, I do a lot of work with him, um, who else, uh? Man, I do, it's, it's, it's all depend, it's all, it just all depends, man, for real, for real, if people, if we feeling that same vibe at that moment or something like that, shit, I ain't never like scared to work with nobody, or, you know what I'm saying, I work with anybody, you know what I'm saying? It's just all about, I just ain't on that, like, I'm not about to hop on a song with you, and you don't even push your own music. Exactly, man, so it's like.
Are you had to turn down, uh, feature? Features, cause people suck?
Nah, I, I wouldn't really say, what, not, well? I have passed up a couple, you know what I'm saying, features, cuz I'm like, yeah, bruh. Yeah, yeah, I had to pass up a few people, I don't be wanting to tell them that at times, but yeah.
So how you break it to them?
Like shit, man, hell. Let me see what I can do here, man, I'm trying to focus on my own shit right now.
It's hard to tell the truth to people, man.
Yeah, cuz you know, you know what I'm saying, people they all worth critic and they hear somebody else say that shit about, they gonna make up goddamn.
You just play the shit and then move on, if you be like, what you think about that, I'll be like, yeah, that shit was god, but you go, ah, that nigga really, you hate the shit, like, nah, nigga, you asked me goddamn.
For real, cuz man, you don't want yes men around, you know what I mean? You don't want people to be like, yeah, man, shit hard, do a damn well, you ain't even did that bob in your head too. Dirk said that shit in one song, he was like, shit, he got the money, he go, he said, I'ma goddamn, I'ma, I'ma switch to a whole nother song if I don't see my partner's bob in their head. And I'm doing it, you know what I'm saying? Like, for real.
Motherfuckers ain't fucking with this.
Yeah, damn, if I don't see my partner's bob in their head in the studio as I'm going, I ain't fuck that, I'm about to got them go to the next one.
You like uh, making music like by yourself more than around other people?
Uh, here lately, yeah, yeah, like, like since I started focusing on myself while the music, like my, my music career. It's like, yeah, I like to work alone cuz I feel like I could work better versus, you know what I'm saying? Somebody else trying to get an input, which is not nothing wrong with inputs, but you know, when you working and they on the same type of time you on, you know what I'm saying? It's just, it's just better to work by yourself, cuz like, I done came up with some of the most fire shit to myself. Like, you know what I'm saying, then laid down and then got no other people here, they're like, oh, that shit hard as hell, but probably what were people around, I probably wouldn't even came up with that little shit. But I do have them sessions where goddamn shit, man, we turn, hell yeah, put me in that motherfucking booth, I'm about to turn up.
You know, when I was writing this shit, I rather been up by myself for real. Have all these motherfuckers in here, for what, god damn, y'all ain't making no songs, god damn, get your ass out of here.
It is, but it is some times where it was some good times and a song came together that turned out great just cuz of the vibe and niggas. So, yeah, I can see it going either way, I just wanted.
Leave me alone.
You have a favorite song of yours?
I don't necessarily, it's, I don't necessarily have a favorite, because it's, 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 I don't know, I got so many hard songs where it's like, damn. It's like, to be honest with you, Trenches wasn't even my, like, one of my favorites, I thought another song was gonna rightly hit other than Trenches. But that's what everybody took on to with that Trenches, and hell, I ran off with that Trenches, man. But just off doing that Trenches though, they got them on the rest of the shit though, so I was like, shit, damn, bruh rightly go for it.
Shit, you find no accident. This shit hard too.
Yeah, but really the jungle, I mean, the younger generation that really got me like, you know what I'm saying? Like, taken off, like, it wasn't my generation that got me goddamn popping, I think everybody knew I was doing that shit, but it was, yeah, but it was the kids that was behind us. They got them, hell, rightly got my name, but they like, god damn, bruh got them, bruh rightly hard. He rap like, hell, bruh got, bruh rap like he twenty.
Fucking kids, hell, they like this shit, this shit'll go. If them kids don't like this shit, you might as well go get a job, god damn.
That's it, man, that's how I do goddamn, all, all my kids at the crib. Man, I'm talking about, man, when I say, and say got them my ass all up, like, now I don't ask them, if I play a song and I see them like jigging and jumping and crunk. Yeah, I, I like, yeah, I might have something right here, I might have something right here, a couple of them wanna, wanna rap too, you know what I'm saying? Um, oldest what, uh, he twelve, well, two oldest are twelve, you know what I'm saying, uh. Uh, my youngest eight, uh, nine and eight, yeah, and sixteen.
And sixteen?
Sixteen.
Trouble goddamn.
So you told, just imagine, man, the household goddamn be a, be, be, it's just built full of a whole bunch of characters, man. All those some characters in that crib, it really definitely a dog moment for real. I think uh, only one really wanna pursue it, that's Jeremiah, and then uh.
The twelve or the sixteen?
That's, that's twelve, that's twelve, yeah, that's sixteen, shit, uh, that, that, that's um, stepdaughter. Uh, she uh, yeah, nah, but yeah, my, uh, the tw- the twelve year old Jeremiah and uh, the nine year old Carter. I'm telling you, they be gonna be ready, they be ready for real, for real, they be at the house writing rhymes, god damn, I come in the house, I got a beat song, freestyling and shit.
That's what's up, I know they be making that.
Yeah, yeah, man, I had to took him to the studio the other day to just know the song. Yeah, we gotta build some structure in the room though, I'm like, yeah, I'm trying to tell y'all, I had to try to show y'all what it take, man. For real, for real, that's cuz, cuz hell man, when I, when I'm really on some, like, yeah, I'm done with this shit, you know what I'm saying, whatever, you feel me, man, that's what I'm gonna put my focus into. It's, you know what I'm saying, the shit, my, 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 my generation, my little kids, you feel me, I'm putting, I'm putting them on, on them. They wanna do it, you feel me, and it just so happened, like, I took on the rapping and the engineering, my brother, he, he make beats, you know what I'm saying? Crazy how, how shit just go, and he raw, man, I'm telling you, my brother, he raw, he coming, like, watch, y'all gonna be seeing his name? Y'all gonna be seeing him, man, for real.
Where they can find him, tell them his name.
Man, on, on Facebook, his name James Davis, man, on uh, I think on IG is Junior Smooth or Chatta Chat. You know what I'm saying, or Chatta, one of the, one of them two, you know what I'm saying, I ain't really too much sure, but I know Facebook is James Davis, man, he got FMM Digital, that's his brand.
Okay, I think I done seen this somewhere, man, on Facebook.
That's where he said. That's what's up, that's what's up.
Whole lot of motion, man, you know what I'm saying, never stop working, even when people think they ain't seeing me and shit, but I'm still working, I'm just cooking up the next move. You feel me, like, for real, like, it's okay to get on them folks' face for a second, you know what I'm saying? So goddamn, by the time it really hit, like, really the summertime is really, and everything gonna pop off, for real, for real. I'm showing, I'm, 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 I'm watch, y'all gonna see, y'all gonna be like, man, nigga went bullshit. Man, he got that, so the fuck, oh, god damn.
So we got some cards. It's a little game we like to play. You know, would, would you rather, you, you know how the game go, would you rather do this or would you rather do that? You know what I'm saying? So, there's some weird shit in here, and we like to see people reaction and see what they would rather do, so, pull a card. Play it and let's play, would you rather?
Don't you gotta get two of them?
Do we do, two of them, any twos from each one, okay, we'll pull two of them, and then twos, which one? So, would you rather, of the would you rather's?
Hand your fortune and cookies, hand your fortune cookies with. Bigger to the uh, saying, one of them every Halloween, or die alone.
Or die alone, shit.
Like, what was the first one, with the fortune cookies?
Is it the fortune cookies with Biggerton, I mean, uh, Bigut- Biggerton sang, Biggerton sang them every Halloween.
Ah, you get a fortune cookie, fortune cookies every Halloween with Biggerton sings in it. In your fortune cookies, or die alone, yeah, that's not a good one. What's the other one say?
That was the, that's why.
Oh, there's the two cards, okay, okay. Damn, or die alone, that's fucked up.
So one more rant?
Yeah, cuz that was, that wasn't. The fortune cookie shit out of there. Might give a fuck about them fortune cookies. Die alone, that's harsh.
They used up a whole card to them three words.
They did, die alone.
It said, drink a glass, drink a glass of all the sweets, uh, uh, I mean, drink a glass of all the sweat you lost throughout the day. Every night before bed. Or be hungover for the rest of your life.
Well, damn. Them two fucked up things.
Sweat though.
For you, forever.
Yeah, I about say.
I might have to though.
You drinking sweat every night?
Is it say every night? I would say every night.
Every night before bed.
Oh shit, no. I ain't never been hungover, I don't know what it feel like.
See, but, but being hungover, you can goddamn, yeah, give me a time though, so shit.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, like, you can do something about being hungover.
Nah, but with the feeling, you, you there, like, ain't no remedy.
Fuck it, I still.
Yeah, I can't drink a glass of sweaty every night. I feel like you got a sweating problem if you sweating glass every day, somebody right.
Well, they say how much you sweat though, right, so like, people's glass might be different amounts.
Man, I know I be sweating sometime.
You might have a day where you come home and be like, hey, there's a cup and a half.
I ain't gonna finish, I ain't gonna go, you have to finish the glass.
You know it's salty, you done licked your face, licked your lip, but it been some sweat on that bitch. Not want this shit in your mouth.
Yeah, nah, I'm going with the hangover.
Yeah, I'm going with the hangover too.
They gonna fuck you on dope. Just everywhere you go, just turn the lights down, this biting shit, this nigga always, what the, I mean, yeah.
They didn't say how bad the hangover would be. You notice it yourself.
Nah, it's gotta be noticeable, like, this nigga, he on something.
Man, I swear today, every night before bed.
Well, tell them where they can find you at, all your social medias.
You know what I'm saying, hey, if you're on my personal Facebook page, you can find me at Nate Davis, you know what I'm saying, on my IG, you can find me, I am underscore the real Platt. You know what I'm saying, uh, on Facebook too, I got my artist page, where, which is the real Platt. You feel me, and if you need to book a session, I got, I got number Jig Gang Studios page on there too, you could book a session through there, you know what I'm saying? Or you can look me up on Google, you know what I'm saying, Jig Gang Studios, it let you know the number and the location, you feel me? But I'm everywhere, man, look me up on Apple Music, Spotify, YouTube, you know what I'm saying, TikTok, whatever you want to on that music, man, the real play. It's gonna pop up.
You be, you be doing TikToks, you know how to do this shit?
I really haven't, that's one of the ones I haven't really, you know what I'm saying?
I want, I've wanted to try to figure it out, but I can't.
Yeah, I, I be trying, man, I just, I just can't get into it.
Times, like, man, what the fuck is, I don't know, I don't. I don't know what the fuck this is.
Appreciate you coming through, man, we gonna get, we gonna, we gonna play one of your songs on the way out. We gonna hit them with trenches.
Yes sir.
That's the one that everybody knows, again, man, uh, appreciate you, anytime you wanna come back through, if you wanted to come and chill while we do the regular show. You wanna bring somebody for us to have sit down with, feel free to hit us up, man, everybody out there, askthesmokers@gmail.com. Yeah, we appreciate it.
Jig Gang or no game, man, the real play.
Oh really, don't join no other gang, you heard me.